Open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your voice and image may be recorded. Well, what can we do here? Highway snow.
We should wait.
Uh, let's see. We have the budget for highway snow, which increased $1,000.
Highway or highway ice and snow?
This is highway snow, which is just the labor part of.
Right.
So, it just increased $1,000. I'm gonna presume it was cost of living increase?
Yeah, yeah, he gave the guys no stuff but cola only until, although his highway budget's also in there, but that's what he, that is what he did there.
Okay.
Well, I mean, is that appropriate to?
Well, he says it's just an approximation of hours anyhow because it's the only thing that can overrun. It's always the best guess.
I mean, he guesses the number of hours, so he's got 225 hours.
Mm-hmm.
This is the highway snow budget, which increased by 1,000, $1,014 for FY '18.
And how did we do last year in terms of?
Hours?
We're in that year now. Last year, I don't put off nobody into the last.
I think last year, he did okay. He didn't go over that much because we didn't have that much snow.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't know this year.
Yeah.
So, we're guessing for next year. How it works.
Um.
I mean, this is deficit spending accounts.
Absolutely. No, I think what we try to do is make it realistic, not.
But is it appropriate as far as the unionizing and all that?
Oh, yeah.
Just give them the budget at least for the cola?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, well.
Yeah, there's no union contract or anything, so that's, we could put that in the budget.
So, do I give a motion?
That's actually, you know, negotiated. I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Call favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, since the fire chief is here, we could go over to the revised fee schedule. Which is in here somewhere. So, I looked this over, and I guess, oh, we all have one. Mary's so good, she has to make them every week. I would not approve, um, where is this? You had $20 for the burning permit?
Mm-hmm.
No, we don't, we, no one pays anything right now, so I wouldn't up it immediately to $20.
It's okay.
So.
However, I think you should have a penalty for someone who's burning and hasn't gotten a permit. That's what I think. And dry on.
Say that into the camera, Chris.
A red F for fire or something?
Yep. I mean, they're.
We can, people can be fine.
There was something somewhere, was it at the end, saying that if you didn't have a permit, that the fee was doubled? But if there is no fee for burning, how do you double that?
Well, I mean.
Pretty tough.
What was your rationale for, for, um, charging?
Because it was another permit. It's something that we go up to all the time. It takes man-hours and.
Right.
To check on these things, and then sometimes when it's really dry, like this year, we had dry, very dry weather, and we were going out doing more checks, and if people wanted to have cooking fires, we were checking on those too. So, just to account for some of the man-hours and et cetera. I know, um, some places still don't charge. Probably the majority of places do charge anywhere from $10 to $25, and it's for the season. It's not for some, you call once, you get the permit.
Right.
Pay the fee, and, and it's done, so.
And they have to call before they burn?
Each day they're gonna burn.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess I could go with $10, since it does take manpower, but.
I think you might be getting more, more fee money if you did the penalty. I don't know.
Yeah, I think you have to be careful. If you, if you're creating a fine, I'm not sure you can do that in a fee schedule.
No, we, we have to fine them, and we can, we can have the, um, the State Forest Warden come in and fine them actually for burning without the appropriate permit or burning the inappropriate materials. We usually, um, we usually give a person, you know, that doesn't know, you know, one free one kind of warning, and if it happens again, then we fine them. But we bring the State Forest Warden in to do that. They write the tickets. Um, and, but as far as the other types of permits, like a, an oil burner permit or something like that, that they, they know they're supposed to take a permit out for it, and they fail to do that, then they call you, somebody calls you for an inspection, and the permit hasn't been taken out. Those are the people that are gonna be penalized by double the fee for when they come to take the permit.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Cuts down on a lot of problems.
All we have printed here are the commercial permits, what they current.
There's both commercial and residential.
And there is residential, but you didn't get the residential, or you got was the commercial.
It's all on, it's all on two pages.
Date.
They're all there.
Oh, and the new one is two pages.
This was.
The old one.
The old one that David gave me.
This is all commercial, it says, and I saw that there's a residential, if you go under the building inspector, that's, they're listed as residential.
So, it didn't print out.
The residential, basically, it stayed the same as far as, like, smoke detector and carbon monoxide.
You saw them online, did you? Because I can't find them online.
Look, look under the building inspector.
Oh.
So, was there another column? Is that what you're saying, online?
No, there's a whole nother document online.
What you're trying to do is, there was so much.
Smoosh them together.
Try to streamline it, put it into two pages. I wanted to get it down to one page, we just couldn't, so we got it to, got it to two pages so it's easier to understand and digest.
Well, it seems, I, like I said, I looked at all the surrounding towns and at how much they charged and how they did it, and they all seem to either go with maybe eight things, and then you have to call them, or they have like a list like this, which, so there isn't any real standard out there to go by.
Everybody does it different.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So, I don't remember what it was, the fire alarm installation review final inspection residential. You're asking 75. What was it?
So, that, um.
I guess I'd have to look at the other paper.
Answer's what it was before, 75.
Okay.
If this is counts, they come in and we can review the plans, list of plans.
Okay. I happened to ask my daughter, who's, uh, does the, is written real estate, and she said they're usually about 50 bucks, but they can range higher. And the smoke detector carbon monoxide is 75 per unit, meaning?
Like, per, no, 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 per, per residence.
Okay.
So, if you've got a condo.
That makes sense.
For each unit.
Right.
Yes, and that's, that's the fee that it was before, and so we're not, I'm not going up on it.
And so, it's a, and so it's a separate fee, 75 for each carbon.
For each unit, so if somebody sells their condo unit.
And then 50, or 75 for the fire, so it's really 150 if they come out and do those at the same time.
For the?
For the fire inspection and the CO2.
No.
No?
No, 75 for the, for the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide monitors.
Okay.
Together, it's $75.
Okay, because it's separate on the paper.
But if they want, if they.
If they want just one.
Come out and just do that, and.
Right.
It's the same work.
Okay, gotcha.
So, if I'm selling my house, it's gonna cost me $75 to have you come in and certify the stuff.
Right.
And right now.
And that's what it costs today, so it hasn't changed.
That's 75.
Okay.
This is the residential.
Okay.
So, the oil burner, right now for residential is 75, and it's lowered now to 50. Okay.
You just went by the amount of work that it takes for everything, and how much time, and, and that covered, um, you know, trying to make the oil tanks and make it work, burner work all the same.
Well, and under commercial, it was 100.
Right.
Okay. So, powder storage residential is gunpowder, not like.
Black powder.
Blast, blasting?
Black powder permit.
Okay.
For, like, for people that use muscle motors, things like that.
People who have a cannon.
Oh, yes. What's with the cannon?
In Ashburn, we have a couple.
Do we?
Do we?
In Ashburn, we do.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, but does Berlin have a cannon, that we need a cannon permit?
They fire it every memorial day.
That's funny.
You rent it, maybe? You rent a cannon?
And what is dumpster storage? Is that over a certain?
Yes. We're gonna get those big 30-yard dumpsters, because they need to be inspected as to where they're placed, so that they're not right up against the buildings, so if they catch on fire, it's on this.
I guess my only comment would be, it would be helpful if you put 30 yards or greater, or, like, if somebody's just looking online.
They can put that.
What's a fire report?
I believe it says in the code anyway, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, I saw a lot of stuff that, that referred to things like, I don't know if you did it too, 26F and 26F and a half.
Those are the, those are the codes for smoke detectors and the types of buildings.
But me, as a residential person, are like, huh?
Right, but, but the Realtor is supposed to know that.
Okay.
It's the Realtor's job to get the test done, get it all taken care of, not the homeowner's job. That's why they hire the Realtor to do it.
Okay.
If there's a Realtor.
Yeah, what if I was doing?
If there's a Realtor.
For sale by owner?
Otherwise, the lawyer's gonna ask for the paper.
I think you'd be saying duh.
Duh.
Maybe it would be clearer with this fire, fire alarm installation and the CO2, put them in the same line, say and/or.
Sure.
That might, if you're gonna put this online, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, and I do want you to put it on.
You know, make notes, give me that, I'll redo it, so that, that's what I wanted to do, is because we're gonna put it online, and we wanna make it easy for people to understand, so, I mean, we made it easy, and I, I sent the guys back with it like four times, and they were getting frustrated with me, and I said, I said, you know, and so, when I send it back again, they'll be thrilled, but that's all right. We wanna make it so that people understand it when they read it online, and that's all.
Right, right.
I'll send you the one I got, that they actually have a little explanation beneath each one of them, which I thought was.
Which was with another town, you mean?
Another town.
Hmm.
Otherwise, yeah, I do, I do think we should have them online.
I was saying to Dave that they weren't online, but they are under inspection services, so my bad.
It's something the building commissioner, I guess, put on, but, yeah.
Well, you should really have a link from, so they're both linked to the same, from the fire department and from.
The building inspector.
The building inspector, so they're both linked to the same document.
Gareth can do that.
Well, I think that was all my comments.
I don't have any that you haven't mentioned?
So, I think.
What do you think about the burning?
Burning permit. I guess make it $10.
I think more people won't get a permit if it's $10.
Well, then he can charge them $20. I don't know.
What does public gathering mean?
An assembly, like a large assembly, uh, concert.
Um, in, in an established hall, outdoors, what?
Typically, inside.
So, if we have somebody doing a play at the 1870 Town Hall?
Usually, it's talking about a public gathering with large numbers of people, where there might be alcohol involved or something like that.
Okay. Because, for instance, I mean, the, the Old Town Hall, that's inspected, that has.
That's gonna be inspected.
And that has a maximum occupancy.
Correct.
And presumably, you don't have to.
No.
Have permits for public gatherings there.
If, if there was alcohol to be served, then there's certain rules that you have to have. You have to have, um, a person that's trained for, um, monitoring, to make sure that there's a safe number of people there, that they can exit appropriately and things like that, so, yeah.
But that doesn't apply to a hall like, that's already been approved for a certain.
Like I said, not unless, not unless you're gonna serve alcohol there.
Okay. I think we may need some more explanation on that, because I, yeah, I, yeah.
On the public gathering piece?
Yeah.
Well, if we give someone a one-day alcohol license, you're saying that you have to have a fire, you have to have someone from the fire department there the whole time they're having their event?
Depends on, again, it depends on, it depends on the event and what they're doing, you know? Are there gonna be, are there gonna be fireworks displays, I mean, things like that, any kind of, depends on the event and what.
And is this for a permit, or is this for having somebody onsite, or what?
That's for a permit.
That's for a permit. Just to run it by, I mean, we had, the, our own food pantry had a wine tasting. We didn't file for that.
No.
No.
Well, I'll put the specifics down.
Yeah, okay, is that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Easy enough.
Okay. I think that's the only one I have.
Well, what do you think about the burning permit? Do you think if you charge $5 or $10, that people would not get a permit and burn? How many permits do you normally have taken out? Do you know?
Several.
And there's still people that don't?
I, I didn't particularly object to the 20, but I'm willing to go along with other people if they feel that's too much, if it's for the whole season. It's not like you get it charged every time you do it.
It's not like you have a real season. It's April, by the time it melts.
January, January 15th.
No, but it's never burnable in January.
It's the best time to do it, when there's snow cover.
Mm-hmm.
Cover your pile now with the tarp and.
Well, I would go along with either no fee or $10.
All right.
If you're insisting on a fee, I'll go with 10.
Okay.
Okay, 10.
10 it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Otherwise, I'll send you my description notes.
Yep.
Are you approving it with the descriptions to follow, or just gonna hold on the approval?
I think we could approve it now, right? No?
It can't go online until we have it, until we have it done, so I would just.
All right, so we'll.
Put it off and move through the final version, yeah.
It's due anyway, so.
Okay.
Did you add the and/or with the? I can just look at that.
Okay. All right, we have the ambulance billing write-off policy next. So, this is that for the.
I could not find one, so, um, this is so that.
I gotta need these back.
Bills that you can't collect on anymore. When they get to a certain point, right now, we have a new billing company. When they're through the billing company, we'll send it to a collections agency, and when they're done with it and they can't collect anymore, then we need to write it off. So, and then there's some cases where Medicare only, you can only bill X number of dollars to a person when it's Medicare. So, it's, it's a lot lower than the rates that we charge. That's the federal government that sets that, so, so those kind of automatically have to be written off, but, and then, um, there's hardship requests where people might ask to have it written off, or they may ask to have payments made. I've done it in the past where people paid $5 a month because that's what they could afford, or, because they wanted to pay their bill. Some people that, you know, they get a bill, they wanna pay it, and.
Right.
Had a little old lady come, $5 she'd bring every week, or every other week, and drop it off, because there was a bill and she wanted to pay it. So, but, but those things need just to be covered by paperwork and be approved. And then, it was anything that, under $100 typically, I would just, I'd have the ability to write it off, so. Otherwise, you could get a great big long list every year, coming in a year to write off. So, it's something for the accounting, the accountants, and the auditors like to see that you have a, a policy, procedure, and process in place to, to take care of those monies that are hanging out there.
Okay.
Is this something that was run by June, or, or does it matter?
It was not run by June, that I know of.
I talked to June about it, and I told her I was gonna send one up, so.
Okay.
And she was okay when you talked to her about it? Talked to her about it, didn't you?
I didn't, I didn't, actually, I didn't give her a copy of that, but certainly could, and it was, it was not a huge rush, it's a.
Why don't we just ask her?
Okay.
Rather than, and then we can approve it next week.
Yep.
Yep.
Okey-dokey.
Rather than bounce it back.
She wanted to ask me if I had a policy.
Yeah.
So, I said, I'll look, and I said, no, we don't, so, here we go.
No, that's fine, let's, let's have her look at it, she personally requested, and then it doesn't have to bounce back and forth.
Okay.
All right.
So, there. We, we didn't decide on anything.
It's a successful.
We got a little closer.
He was also interested in the building inspector job description, which is the next thing on the agenda.
All righty.
So, we got these last week.
Mm-hmm.
You don't get another one this week.
Oh, I can do that if you'd like.
Nope.
So, comments?
Uh, no, I actually looked at that, and I thought it was okay.
The top one or the Westminster one?
Uh, the top one looked okay to me.
The top one is Larry's.
Yeah.
Right. Um, Chris, you have.
I, um. So, did you give us Westminster? Okay.
He gave us Westminster.
So, that's the one that you?
No, he's saying he thought the Berlin one was.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought that they both said essentially the same thing. I think the Westminster one was just a little wordier.
Yeah.
But, um, I'm okay with the short version, if, if that's the words, choice.
Well, I don't think we normally, like, the Westminster one has a grade level and fair labor law exempt, and who they report to. We don't have that, I don't think, on any of ours, do we? We, we word it. I think the most important thing for me was that it includes the zoning enforcement in it.
Yep, and also that, um, it had the provisions about, um, you know, supervision received, because if we wanna, you know, historically, we, we've had a few situations in which I think if people had talked about things first, it would've worked out better, you know?
So, under supervision given, we have supervises one clerical employee developing job direction, assigning tasks, and indirectly supervises other inspectors. Is that what we agreed on? Or did we say that, that he should also have some supervision of the other inspectors?
I, I thought that expressed it, because obviously, he's not supervising their work specifically, he's sort of, sort of supervising their performance of the job, you know? So, I, that description didn't seem inappropriate to me.
Okay.
You're more looking for, is that position to coordinate?
Yeah.
Coordinate the inspectional services department?
Yeah.
Rather than to actually oversee the electrical appliance.
Exactly, which I thought.
Because they have their own.
To supervise indirect, yeah.
The department overall.
I think the other.
If we wanted to add coordinate there, I suppose it would be good.
Supervision given. I mean, the other piece is that they also need to interface with the fire inspector. Is, that's been a piece that's been missing, hasn't it?
It's going very well right now.
Okay.
I actually thought I saw it in here somewhere.
Did you?
I hadn't seen the Berlin one, because I couldn't find it online, but.
He doesn't, he doesn't online. He actually doesn't have one, like, now officially approved. This is one that he'd suggested.
Well, I can't find it, but unless it was in the Ashburn, or the Westminster one.
Yeah, I mean, we have a contract with him that describes if there wasn't, you know, a separate job description.
Our job descriptions aren't online anyhow.
I didn't see anything in here, but it could be in the Westminster one.
Just for my short time here, I think it might be important that the new building inspector, being the zoning officer, you know, maybe required to go to the zoning Board of Appeals hearings and meetings.
Yes. Well, so, the Westminster one says, um, reviews site plan, special permit, and on request of the ZBA, makes onsite inspections to review work in progress following the issuance of special permits. This is the one you're thinking of.
Yeah.
Maintains a close working relationship with the town coordinator, planning board, Board of Appeals, DPW, Health Department, Conservation, Police, Fire, and Board of Assessors.
I like that.
So, maybe we could put those two pieces in, under our.
Circle what you want, and I can. Do you know where you want, or just find a nice place to put them?
It's under essential functions, so I would put it under, um, essential functions.
Okay.
Good spot.
Enforces zoning bylaws, initiates inspections, authorized to initiate legal action.
Does, uh, does our building inspector go to meetings at night, the ZBA, or?
Nope. Well, I think.
I mean, there have been times when there have been contentious issues that he has. He doesn't regularly.
Right.
The only times I can think of is when we really had a contentious, almost litigation situation.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'd also like to put in the paragraph that says, enforces zoning bylaws, initiating inspection and enforcement actions as prescribed by state statutes and town bylaws, and as such provides interpretation of zoning bylaws as authorized to initiate legal action to enforce bylaws, because.
I, I'm not sure I want that unless it's in consultation with somebody else I've had. I mean, certainly depends upon the person, but I, I am concerned at that breadth.
Well, you could leave out the, is authorized to initiate legal action, or put in, here, it's this paragraph here.
I see that.
Because ours is much weaker on that one.
Ours says investigates complaints of alleged zoning violations, issues necessary notices and orders when complaints are verified, prepares documents and evidence to be used at district and superior courts, confers with town council as required.
Well, I, but that's if someone complains. I think that initiating it, initiating an inspection enforcement is the piece that we don't do a lot of.
Okay. Yeah, I think I wouldn't mind putting that in. And, that would go in here, just before that, right? Okay?
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
You put those two things in, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
The review of the site plan.
Right.
Make that number two and number three. Yep. Okay?
Can I take that to Zoe?
Yes, I will give this.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
Next step? Next step?
So, we'll approve this tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, I guess, I don't know, should we put out a notice? If we work back from hiring, Larry's going to work till June 30th.
Depending on what the doctor says.
Right.
Tomorrow or Wednesday.
Is it this week?
Yeah. Then I suggest we set the timeline next Monday because that's, you know, if we know that we have until June, then that's one thing. If we know that we have until the end of...
Even though, even if you have till June, six months, it's not a long time to get the ad out.
No, no, no. But by the same token, if we just, if we find out that we only have till the end of the year, January, then we have to have a Plan B.
An interim or something.
Yeah, exactly. So, I would suggest that we put it on the agenda for next Monday when we have that information. Otherwise, we're just talking about alternate realities and we don't know which one is which, you know?
So, we'll find out from Larry on Wednesday what his doctor said, and then Monday we can come up with a plan of action.
Yeah.
Do you want a sample ad or something or...?
Well, you can look for some.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we post the job description as we...
Yeah, it's a very short ad and referring to our website.
Yeah, that's...
I'll draft one for you to look at.
Is it going to be full-time now or continue to be part-time?
Well, I think we're still, we have River Bridge and Holly Combs.
We do have to decide the number of hours. I mean, we have a compensation level that's quite...
Generous.
Generous. I mean, I don't necessarily think that that's...
No. I don't think so. Well, we can talk about that next week.
Yeah, but I think we can get more hours with the same, I think we can with the same compensation, but...
I think we can get more hours with less money.
Well, I'm sorry to say, I mean, a year or two ago, I would have said more likely yes, but the construction trades are heating up and people have alternatives now that... Anyway, we'll figure it out.
He's doing 36 hours a week right now.
Hmm.
He's doing 36 hours a week.
Which is pretty much full-time, you know?
Yep.
And is, have we gotten anything as far as compensation in other towns for the job or not?
Yeah, we have in the past.
Are we in the ballpark?
You could probably ask in the May and they probably have a printout of...
There is a salary survey, but to get apples to apples, it does, you wouldn't have all the data in there without calling.
It becomes hard because if they're getting paid by fees, you know?
Or some full-time.
I thought we did put something together.
Size of commercial development versus residential development.
You just compare Berlin, Ashburn, and Berlin has so much more commercial construction than Ashburn, whose population is twice the size of Berlin.
Oh, right.
And then the square mileages is three times the size, but you've got that construction going on there. It's kind of unique.
Mm-hmm. That we are. All right, so we'll do this on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
The 12th.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a nice night.
And you too.
Do we want to approve the, have an official, do I hear a motion to approve the building inspector job description?
With the, yeah.
With the changes?
Changes that we had discussed and marked. So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's go back to the beginning. So, budget requests. We have Highway with a $4,822 increase, which includes a cost of living increase for everyone.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second?
Well, I do have to say that he's got part-time position title, police. Oh, he's putting in, what do you call it?
Details?
Details. He's got 120 hours for details in here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have Veterans Services.
Chris sent you an email about that today.
Yeah, I got that. I, am I, I guess I'm the liaison?
No, I don't know that there is one.
No. I have the...
So I get it by default, huh?
Your folks have to do his office.
Yes.
So he, so he just wants to speak to somebody about...
How to, how to address and how to get and handle on his compensation because it doesn't, I'm not sure how it ever came to be, his hours are eight hours a week, but his hours in, for both towns are posted as eight hours a week, the same eight hours a week.
And how do you do that?
Um, well, he is, we give him the office space and he does see his clientele here for both towns.
Oh.
When the job, I guess, first started, it was $500 with no cases, so...
Why are we getting, he's asking for basically level funding, right?
On the face of that budget, he's asking for level funding, except he is not really seeking level funding because he wants to revisit the pay piece.
All right, so Berlin pays him $2,778 annually, which is $230 a month, and Bolton pays him almost $300 a month or $3,660 a year. Now, I thought that what's billed to Berlin isn't as great as Bolton because we provide the office space and the telephone, if I vaguely remember some of this.
That could be. I asked Don Lo to give us his most recent budget. I didn't think to ask him until he left, so I thought maybe Don could whip it over and he wasn't able to answer today.
I think he's always been a stipend.
I don't see the request for more than level funding.
It is not on the face of his budget.
Okay.
He is asked, as he handed that in...
Okay.
You think he's thinking of next year? The following year, FY19?
No, he means now.
Really?
Yeah.
So why is he submitting a budget this level funding?
Perhaps you shouldn't have put it in there. Needs, he's asking for help and talking about what he should do to increase his pay.
I think it's going to have to be a conversation with Bolton.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at it on an hourly basis, it's, he is, I don't know if he's stipend or not, his appointment letter from 2011 said not to exceed 20 hours a week, but it didn't say what his hours expectation was here. So, I guess maybe it's never really been clear from the outset here on what was expected, although I don't know what his predecessor did.
Here's the way it works. If somebody wants to increase their budget, they need to put together a written request and a written justification that says, "I feel, you know, that this should be increased by $1,000 because I'm spending X number of hours," and when you divide that out, you know, with 2,000, I'm only being paid, you know, five bucks an hour or whatever, but that's what we need, and...
Should Chris meet with him? He has asked to meet with Chris.
Chris...
Maybe he should do that first.
Yeah, he needs to say why he thinks he needs more of an increase.
If he still wants somebody to meet with him, I might...
I mean, yeah, but typically people give us a request.
Well, and I do think that, that he should probably meet with Don Lo at the same time.
Right. Should be something in conjunction with Bolton.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a shared person with a shared budget. So, I thought that the reason that they paid a little bit more was because we provided the office space, the phone. I'm trying to remember. I mean, this was quite a while ago when we lost...
I remember when they went, I remember when he went from stipend, I think, to...
Well, I was just thinking of when we, we lost the one person and then...
Michelle.
Yeah, and then he came on board.
I guess there has been a difference, though. I'm not sure exactly when this came to be, but the, there was a $500 stipend for whoever was covering for Veterans Services and there were no cases. Now, it's grown to $2,700 a year, and there's three cases for this town and there's three cases for Bolton. But he gets a little bit more from Bolton, but it could be that adjustment, like you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, if he, if he wants more, he should make the case for more.
I guess my question is this, he's asking, if you look at it, if you broke it down on an hourly basis, he makes six something an hour here, and over there, he'd be making eight something an hour. But if you put them together, because the office hours are happening simultaneously, it's 15, 50 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
True.
Yeah.
But do you look at it that way? I don't know.
Yes.
Yes, because he's physically...
He spends just that number of hours and he's paid jointly by both towns, and it's a joint position. So, yes, of course you put it together.
That might be what he's asking about.
Well...
He asked to have someone more executive to flesh it out with him than your secretary. I can, I had already asked Don Lo for some information about it and...
But I think definitely because it's joint office hours. He doesn't have separate office hours for Bolton. We pay an amount, Bolton pays an amount. That's what he gets per hour in his office hours, the combination of the two of those things. I'm sure some weeks, he may spend more time on the Berlin cases, some weeks more on the Bolton cases, but we jointly pay him for those office hours.
I asked him if he was going to be asking for more from Bolton this year, and I didn't really get an answer. I think he's kind of lost on the process, so...
Well, and...
Because he's not on the compensation grid, but then a stipend person isn't on the compensation grid.
Well, and he's a shared person, so he's not going to be on the compensation grid either because he's getting an hourly rate, but it's shared between two towns.
For example, Harvard didn't have a Veterans Agent. It actually doesn't have its own right now. The former one resigned. And when he asked what that pay was, it was $1,000 a year, and he's like, "How many cases is it? I don't even care. It's $1,000 a year. It's too little," because it was a flat type of thing. So, I got that. That would have been him in the third town, but then it's not going to be diluted equally. It would have been Berlin paying 2,700, Bolton paying 3,000, and Harvard paying 1,000. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it doesn't necessarily jive with the number of cases which have increased from zero to three for each town.
Are you arguing, what are you arguing about?
I'm not arguing for it. I'm just explaining to you what is kind of bubbling around.
That would be a way for him to increase his pay, is that what you're saying? By adding another town and use the same amount of hours?
Pay on the number of cases he has because those would go up and down in theory, right, as they pass or come on?
No, I frankly think it should be roughly based upon office hours, and right now, it's like a contract. I mean, he gets X amount and he does X amount of office hours. If, and if the total is somewhere between $15 and $16 an hour, if he wants to say, either I'm spending more than the office hours because of these cases, or if he's saying that $15 or $16 an hour isn't market rate...
Show the survey information that shows otherwise.
Then you should talk to us about that.
Well, and he should talk to Bolton because it's a shared hourly rate.
I mean, us, you know, us, and we will look at our portion of that, and Bolton would have to look at theirs.
Okay, I'll tell him.
Yeah, but that's the way anybody does it. I mean, you know, when June wants us to review her compensation, you know, when you do that, you ask us.
Do the salary survey, you ask.
Yeah, you justify it and we look at it.
I think, yeah. He doesn't have that experience doing that, and on top of it, he's kind of not sure, because I think this pay came up in relation to, in his head, minimum wage is going to $11 an hour in January. How do I prepare my payroll? You know, I was like, oh, I didn't think, his pay budget request for salary in the coming year is, he's not really payroll, he's not hourly, he's stipend. I'm not sure who told him to be here eight hours a week, for example. Is there an expectation from the board that he is here for eight hours a week? What if he was six hours a week and still drew the same stipend?
I think that we've typically, just given a stipend and presume that they'll have the number of cases that they have.
Yeah.
And get it done.
Yeah. I mean, and if you look at other towns, like, I think the Veterans Agent is shared by three towns. I'm trying, I can't remember what I saw, but they were Sterling, you know...
I think Harvard's is at the moment. It's Harvard, Air Shirley, I think, is all, I think he covers all three, for example.
Yeah, I mean, because typically, you know, three, in our town, three cases, and it might go down to one case or whatever.
All right, I'll just, I'll pass on some feedback.
Not that it matters, but that, that one email that we got, well, we got one from Copelman and Page, and we got one from Deutch Williams about the minimum wage and the injunction.
About exempted employees.
Okay.
That, that doesn't...
That was, that doesn't have any, that was...
I wasn't sure, yeah.
That was more for salaried employees.
Right, and overtime.
And overtime, yeah, yeah. All right, so, do you want to, well, so you're going to tell him, he's going to have to write something up and express what it is he's looking for.
Okay.
And if he, you know, I don't mind talking to him if he still wants to talk to me.
Well, we could all talk, all three of us, if you want.
Yeah, and even have Don Lo come or call him or something. Or maybe if Don Lo wants to have a conversation with the board through me, doesn't matter.
Okay. I will, I'll see if I can do that.
Just give me a heads up a couple of days before.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, next is the general contract. Now, this doesn't have a December 8 deadline, does it?
No.
I thought we said that we just need to give them a notice of award.
Right.
So, the comments on this were...
Do we have the notice of award?
For tonight, because we need to award it by...
I was gone for the week. I came back to 140 emails that I was being handled, and when this afternoon I saw that email with all the amendments, did you understand what I was...
Well, this is just a notice of award. It's not the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything on it.
Who said they had a notice of award?
I thought that, I thought that email had two, but I was looking at it on the BlackBerry because it came in so late. I was en route. There wasn't one attached to that email?
No.
With the contract?
I thought...
No, when the attorney sent his email back...
There was a Word document and there was a PDF. The Word document was not the notice of award?
The Word document was 32 pages of add, delete, add, delete, add, delete, add, delete to the IAIA contract. But Tom, the IAIA contract, he was telling us to stick the amendments in, was a Form 201, which would be for a general contractor. But what he attached a PDF of was the 101 that we used to contract with the architect, not a contractor contract.
Okay.
So, he's given us amendments to a contract form that we don't have. We don't have a general contractor contract, unless I used, I suspect the Helen Carl one might have been in IAIA. It came, you know, late in the afternoon and she has to go pull the old Helen Carl one. But we don't have that form because we don't, we don't have the copyright access to that boilerplate to get in and make any changes. And I guess what he's saying is, I don't have it either. You turned the PDF that he gave us into a typeable form, but it's a Form 101, not a 201 form. You know what I'm saying? Do you follow me on that?
I, yeah, no, no, I mean, I follow what you're saying. I'm not entirely sure I understand the situation.
Because the numbers that he's trying to suggest is still don't jive.
I hear you, but I don't know the difference between the two contracts. I don't know why he would have sent a 101 instead of a 201, which seems to me...
Because that's what Tom Chalmers of Austin Design sent, is saying, "Here's a sample IAIA contract," but it was his IAIA contract, not one for a general contractor. When town council's comments are talking about adding and deleting to paragraph 15 dot 3 dot 5, there is no paragraph 15 in a Form 101 for an architect. It would be in a general contractor's, I'm presuming.
But we're looking for a notice of award, so let's not, let's not get off on this. So, it's a legal document, notify, blah, blah, and I'm just looking to see if there's a blank one out here.
No, we had an example of it last week, and Copelman was supposed to review it.
A form of a notice of award?
Yeah.
And I whiffed on it and didn't see it. I don't remember seeing it.
We had one last week.
At last week's meeting?
Yeah.
Everything is there from last week's meeting.
Standard form, owner...
I don't think I had anything.
See, I'll document, blah, blah. I thought someone, they were going to give it to us or... I don't think this is it. Sorry, would just be a simple letter that...
Did you check Abby's?
Email?
Emails, because I thought one was attached that. I thought they attached this contract from Tom Chalmers and the notice of award were on the same email, unless I'm losing it.
You're right.
I still may be losing it, but I remembered that.
But not at such a high rate.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So, let's print that out. We'll take a quick look at it. I, I thought that had gone to Copelman.
Not for me it didn't, but maybe you all were passing stuff around.
No, I thought we were, the idea was we were sending both of those to them for review.
That was in Boston. That was on Tuesday, the 29th, it looks like, and I wasn't...
I thought we talked about sending this to them for review, so they clearly haven't gotten it.
Well, today's the 5th.
She sent that to Jill Bard initially.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And a notice to proceed.
Yeah, and we didn't get a comment back from Copelman on the notice of award.
Let me check on that.
Because I saw that they were having the problem with PDF, I had about ten minutes in my office. Then I had to go to a meeting, and then I had to leave directly. So I opened the PDF, converted it, sent it back, so people could, you know, have a working document. But I didn't have time to open the second document and see what it was, because, I mean, it came in at like four, fifteen this afternoon, so.
Well, you sent, well, this was from Evy, checking in to see if we're all set with the notice of award. Hoping to have the selectmen sign it off tonight. That's today at seven in the morning. Evy sent that.
Yeah, she sent a six-thirty email saying you can reach me by cell phone if you need me.
No, I mean, she hasn't gotten anything. We haven't gotten anything on this.
No, I don't see comment back, but I haven't, I don't see anything back from, do you think you got something from Joel?
The only thing I got back from Joel, not from Joel, but from Copelman, was the email that came in late this afternoon.
Correct.
When I saw there were two documents, and when we had sent two documents, I thought that the second was obviously comments on the second one we sent them. But we apparently haven't gotten any comments on this.
They did not comment on those two forms, on that form and this one, which is the notice to proceed. And that's the notice of award. That's what Evy sent last week.
Yeah, this one can wait, but this one can't. All right.
Is there anything in that that would be, I mean, all it says is?
I had, there were a couple of questions that I asked, and they were, given the fact that we haven't signed a contract, okay? Do we need to modify this thing if you fail to execute the agreement, which we aren't sending to them and provide bonds within ten days? You know, we would consider their, you know, their rights to be abandoned. I thought we needed to adjust this a little bit, and I wanted to, I wanted to talk to them about that.
Do you think that there was a dialogue that didn't get copied to the selectmen's office? I can continue looking around.
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
And if it wasn't copied to the selectmen's office, how would we know it?
I'm not. That's why it doesn't drop in my memory.
Yeah, okay. Here's what I would like to do.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I would like to get an authorization to execute this notice of award, pending any administrative adjustments to this to allow for the fact that the contract, you know, is not yet signed, and the bonds may not necessarily be required within ten days.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So if you.
So the motion is that you're going to take this and talk to Joel.
Yeah, and make such administrative adjustments to this as may be necessary.
And then you'll sign it and send it to Mary.
I will come in and sign it, yeah.
Or I could come in and sign it.
I'll be, well, I'm going to get it to him tomorrow, and I'm going to be working from home tomorrow, so I can come in and sign it.
Okay, so the motion is that.
And if it does get to Wednesday, I'll let you know, you know, but, okay?
Okay.
So the motion is to approve the notice of award and to document that with the notice presented to the meeting tonight with such administrative amendments as may be recommended by council, okay?
Right here, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Give me this back.
Yep. All right, so we'll do that.
And this?
Yep.
You can keep that bottom one.
Okay.
All right, now what was the second thing? There's the notice of award and the.
Notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed. So what is the?
The notice to proceed tells them that they're okay to proceed with the project, okay? But I don't know when the opening date is.
So the next piece, what is the, I guess my question was, is the contract?
The next piece is the contract. The notice of award is first. The contract is next. The notice to proceed is third.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we can talk about the contract next week? So we got stuff back from Copelman, and?
But it appears to be amendments to a contract that is other than the contract that they attached. That's what you said.
That's what I saw when I reviewed it today.
Okay. All right, so we need, I mean.
We need to get back to them.
We need to get back to them.
We need to go out and.
Yeah, I'm annoyed, you know?
Yeah, I mean, they've been very.
I was, sorry, not my place to have an opinion, but I was pretty ticked to see that at two o'clock, when I thought that that was going to be handled.
All right, well, let's get the notice of award done, so we can get that out, and then we'll talk about their service or lack of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the idea of making comments to an agreement that they clearly had to have had because they were making comments to it, and then to attach an agreement that wasn't the agreement that they were making.
The comments.
Comments to, and then saying that they couldn't manipulate that agreement, which who cares if you couldn't manipulate it, because it wasn't the agreement the comments were attached to? I mean, I just, something is disconnected here. I'll have to look at the email when I get home, but. All right.
Okay, let's go to Form B, reviews. So we.
Too late.
Yeah. Anyway, I could do something Saturday for an hour or so, but did we decide we, others weren't available that day?
No, I think we were talking about last Saturday was Christmas in Berlin.
Yeah.
Did you have something on the tenth?
The co-housing craft fair.
Well.
But that's okay. I can head up there later.
If we met at nine.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I could do nine.
All right, nine AM on the tenth.
Okay.
Nine AM.
Well, because there's a lot of stuff I keep dropping on you there. There's two different department heads that like to talk to you, and I would give them appointment times because they want to talk about the job descriptions they submitted.
Well, they could come in next week.
Sorry, which two department?
They want to talk about personnel.
Which two department heads?
The principal assessor about Rose Pierce's job description and the title changing. It's the same job description she submitted last year that I copied you all. She submitted again and said, yes, this is what I'd like to discuss with them, but she wouldn't necessarily be available on a Saturday. She was going to be here Friday this week. She usually isn't over Friday.
I mean, I read the job description. It looked okay.
Oh, maybe you don't need to be with her, and she doesn't need to meet with you if you don't think you need to. And the other person is Board of Health, Sue Regera, who has not just a job description for senior transfer station attendant, which would be a new post, but she wants to redo the job descriptions for transfer station manager, an existing job that doesn't seem to have a job description, but no reclassification of that. And the other one is transfer station attendant. We just used the one that was on the books for the past decade in May, but she wants to redo that one. Neither of those two are being reclassified. She just wants to redo the job descriptions on those and talk to you about them.
Well, redo the job descriptions and give them to us, and then.
They're here. They've already been sent to you. They're copied.
All right, well, we can look at them on a.
If you don't think you need to do appointments with them, then you can just go ahead and have your.
I don't think we want to do appointments on Saturday, because we have plenty of other things to do.
I'll tell them both that you're just going to go ahead with the job descriptions that they.
We'll go and look at what they have, and if we have questions, then they can come in. All right. All right, we're back to the capital planning bylaw.
Yep.
And this is the draft you did, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, well, here's, I guess, the original one.
And I worked off of notes that we had taken at that meeting. Where, on the basis of the notes, because in some cases, people said one thing and then another thing, and then, you know, another. When I went back to my notes on a couple of things, I couldn't remember which one we settled on, so I put those.
Both at the date, yeah.
Well, I put them in brackets.
Right.
Where anything, where I was putting in what I thought we had agreed, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. I put it in brackets.
Didn't we talk about for membership where the members would come from?
We did, didn't we?
We actually, I thought we talked about who would appoint them.
But not, like, in this one, it says that, that one, they may be, but need not be, members of their respective board.
And that it says the same thing here.
Okay. So we couldn't remember if you said moderator or finance committee?
That's what I couldn't remember, because I had, my notes actually said both. Because I think we talked about each alternative.
So finance committee can't be on any other board?
True.
So.
They could appoint someone.
They could appoint them, but they can't be members of this.
But I know we talked about the moderator appointing, so maybe it wasn't the finance committee. Maybe it was the moderator.
Well, I'd have to go find my notes. I can bring them in.
But the other thing is, I mean, we just talk about what we think is appropriate.
Well, and I think that in the beginning, they'd have to be terms longer than one year, or you'd have everybody renewing every year. You don't want some kind of rolling renewals?
Well, no, I actually thought, and I thought about that. I mean, you could say, you know, one year, three years. But eventually, they were all going to be one-year terms. So my feeling is, you know, yeah, they're all one-year terms, but a lot of people will be willing to serve, to succeed themselves. But I did, I looked at the notes on that, Judy. And we had talked about maybe, you know, like, one, two, three, or whatever. But then when I thought about it, I thought, but if they all end up reverting to one year, then at some point, that, you know.
Yeah.
It is what it is, you know, that.
And it doesn't matter how long they serve.
No, there's no limit. They can succeed.
Themselves.
Themselves, yes.
Forever.
And so my thought was, I mean, obviously, one of the things you might want to say when you're first composing it is, you know, we like people who would, you know, be willing, you know, to serve for like a couple of years, three, you know.
Right.
Somebody you might, but I didn't think, finally, when I was sitting down and looking at the notes, I thought, I'm not sure that made any sense, you know?
I don't know.
What do you think? Probably doesn't matter one way or the other. There's always that thing in the back of people's minds sometimes where they know that they can resign at any time anyway. So if you have a three-year term.
Right.
You may not fulfill it anyway. I, you know, some people are going to be dedicated and stick it out. Others might just try it out and not want to continue.
Now, the other alternative would be to have a three-year term, but an initial, you know, that would be one, two, and three, and do it that way.
Right. Well, it's not like it's elected and they have to go out. So we can leave it at one year and see how it works out. We can always change it.
Yep.
Although this has got to go before the town.
It's a bylaw.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, but you can, I mean, it's no biggie. If it doesn't work out with one-year terms, you went back, you know, two years later and said, we looked at it and we'd rather have two-year terms or three-year, you know. I don't think that would be a big deal.
Responsibility, click and reviewing all proposed capital items, annual report.
Did you have the October first date in brackets because you weren't sure if that's the date?
We had kicked around a number of dates, and again, you know, that's the problem with looking at notes.
I know. I didn't have hardly any notes, so.
Six or eight months, six or eight weeks after the meeting.
Right.
We had written down a number of them, and I think we had decided on October first because the notes in the margin said, talked about the fact that that would give people time sort of after the summer to come back and sort that out. But October first was still very early in the budget process. So I just had those scribbles there, and so I thought we settled on October first, but.
I have down November through January would be most of the time that these people would be working.
Yeah.
Right?
And the way this was written, and then here again, I had two dates, you know, written to sort of.
I would go with January fifteenth, because December thirtieth, it's like the end of the holidays. You've got.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
All that time in there.
That's fine. I think that's what we, I think we at first said year end, and then I think we did bump it to January fifteenth. But again, when I looked at the notes, I had both dates down, and I didn't cross one out when I took my notes, so. So that, the way this is written, it would mean that, you know, officers, department heads, boards, committees have to submit something by October first, and then it gives them between October first and January fifteenth to meet with people, talk with people, and finalize the plan. The way this is written now, the way we change things.
Do we need to put in that they, they have to follow the open meeting law?
I mean, I think all town boards do. I mean, we could certainly put it in. It's not, there's no harm to it.
It's in our appointment letters, and then they go to the town clerk who gives them a packet about the open meeting law, and they get sworn in.
Yeah, I didn't put it in because it's just a matter of law, you know?
And ethics applies and whatever, I mean, so.
Okay. So.
Just a couple of things that I, you know, that, as I was putting it together.
I'm sorry, if you're not appointing them, we wouldn't be sending out the appointment letter.
Well, we'll appoint two of them.
Yeah, but for the sake of uniformity, you might want to put it in there with this different appointing authority so that it's clear to anyone who's going to serve on it that that does apply.
It does make it kind of awkward, because you've got, well, I think the selectman would have to send out the notice that there's. Trying to think, you know, on how you coordinate, making sure that everybody gets the same information to the appointees. That comes through the clerk, right? She would still have to swear all of them in.
Yes. Well, everybody would have the bylaw. That's what they start with.
No, but I'm thinking in terms of what she was just saying, that if you were going to Corey test them, if you were going to the open meeting bylaw, the, you know.
Yeah, but that applies to any appointee.
Yeah, I understand, but if it's our appointees, then we typically tell them, right?
We notify them. I don't know that the.
I don't know that the planning board or that the moderator would know because you have three different appointing authorities?
Okay.
I'm not saying that we're going to change this, but there needs to be some way to make sure that.
Well, you can give them a sample of our appointment letter, right?
Separately elected boards could do whatever they want separately.
Right, but if we give them a sample of the appointment letter, that will tell them what.
I thought we were just getting to the idea of whether you'd put in there a brief sentence to say that open meeting law and ethics laws apply. Because that way it just puts everybody on the same notice at the outset.
We can certainly do that. I mean, it does that whether you put it in the town bylaw or not.
It does, it does. And that leaves me grabbing them when they're getting sworn in and giving them that information.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly put it in.
I'm just looking at the appointments. Should there be a date attached to when these people should be appointed?
Well, the terms.
If they're not stated otherwise, they go to May thirty-first of every year. That's how the town reports.
This is June thirtieth.
So, okay.
These run on the fiscal year. But that's, it says that.
Okay, so, I mean, those appointing authorities, I guess, would be aware of that then.
It's in the bylaw, yeah.
Yep.
The other big law would be public records law, public records law. If you're going to cite it before I cite all three.
Well, and they should keep minutes, which, I mean, is part of the open meeting law, but it doesn't seem that. Well, all right, I should say these groups keeps minutes, but they don't post them, and they should be posted along with their agendas.
Which groups?
Well, then we should put out an advisory to all these groups.
I think we should. We think we should, because I've looked online trying to find groups' minutes, and they're not up there. We think we should, because I've looked online trying to find groups' minutes and they're not up there.
We're the best, which doesn't say much.
Okay. A couple of things that I did tweak as I was putting it together. If you look at the definition of a capital item, okay?
Right.
I adopted the $10,000 cost, okay, and the useful life of five years. I included a C, which was any program of equipment replacement or similar program, even if costing less than $10,000, that the board or department intends to fund by special article outside of normal operating budgets. And what I was thinking of is items like if somebody was gonna put in $8,000 every year for breathing equipment or, you know, something like that. So that was, that was a change to the other because, you know, typically, we look for a recommendation when something is a special article, you know, and-
Okay.
But, and I'm just pointing that out because that was something-
Well, I mean, I think we've had a little bit of what should be in someone's budget and what should be a special article because I thought that the finance committee wanted as much in their budget as possible, so, I don't know.
Yeah, and again, my thought here was if you had some recurring equipment replacement, you know, that's-
But that should be in your, should that be in your budget, if you know that it's recurring?
If the board or, and again, if the board or department intends to fund by special article outside the normal budget. If they don't and it's in their budget, then it's not in the capital plan. If they want to fund it, the point of this was, if they wanted to go that approach, Judy, they had to put it before this board.
Right.
And that gets FinCom, and FinCom could say, you know what, that goes in your budget.
Right, right.
But that, okay?
Right. I was just looking to see what they had in here for greater than $3,000. Depreciates usually three years or more. Asset class, character six, services, painting rooms, medical treatments, these are all non-capital assets, routine building maintenance.
Mm-hmm. And we have here a useful life of five years at cost of at least $10,000, okay? And then any program, you know, sort of recurring that may be less than $10,000, but it may, it's funded outside of the normal budget is the way I characterized it, okay?
Okay. So, do we intend to approve this tonight, or?
What I, what I, well, what I would suggest is that we, I mean, if people wanna take yet, you know, take another week on it, mark it up if you want.
Why don't we send it over to FinCom?
And then my point was, then we can send it over.
That's what I was gonna suggest was, you know, see if there was-
I don't need to look it over anymore, I mean, but send it over to FinCom and get any comments from them.
You didn't add any comments to this tonight, this is the same.
All I did was take the period.
Yeah, the period at before department in the second to the last line of the first page.
Okay.
I think-
Mr. Rogue, one in there?
Not the rogue?
Okay.
No, no, I think I know what happened, I hit the-
Oh, and then-
I hit the number, I hit the number a long time.
Yeah.
And then I hit the leaf to remove the space.
And I didn't know that October 1st was too early, but I think it is, but, well, I mean, I'm sure that will be, well, FinCom might not make that comment though, but maybe other groups would.
I have to use the calculator and I use the, you know, I use the keypad and the number lock rather than the numbers on top, 'cause I'm used to an adding machine.
So you wanna take, put January 15th in D. Right now, it's got either December 30th or January 15th.
You wanna just-
Yeah, just mark it up.
Put on that copy and I'll-
Yep, here we go.
Probably the rogue, yeah, you got it to the December 30th.
There's the rogue.
And I don't know if you, if we decided we were gonna put open meeting and ethics laws or just leave that to be to whoever appoints them.
Or, again, we can put out an advisory letter to all boards.
Okay.
Which I think is probably more appropriate, so, there you have it. And you're leaving October 1st is okay for now?
I think it's early, but hey, we wouldn't have ours in by October 1st, I could tell you that.
This is capital.
So we still wouldn't have any capital. I mean, Tom's kinda taken over the, the copy machines, but if we had to put stuff in for copy machines or-
Well, do you wanna put October 15th or November 1st?
I think November 1st is more-
Okay, put in November 1st.
Is more rational, reasonable.
Put in November 1st.
I'm looking for, oh, there is one, I have a number.
As I say, that's why I put it in brackets, because they've been kicked around the number.
All right, review, so, we'll see if there's any comments and we can approve it next week.
Yep.
Unless something comes through.
On this, would the FinCom be able to act that quickly?
Oh, well, then say two weeks.
14th meeting?
Their meeting.
14th.
This is a bylaw, it's gonna have to go before a special town meeting, so we will review it when we get-
Okay, whenever they get the comments back.
Whenever we get comments back, yes.
Yeah. Mass Housing Sightwalk for the Capes of Berlin. I can go.
Do we, are we all going on this? That's what I wasn't clear on. Is this something we should?
Well, I certainly wanna fill the guy's ear. I'm motivated on this one, but, I mean, we can all go if we want.
Okay, I mean, I wasn't sure, I guess it depends on what day and time.
They'll post it and then-
What times, did you have, what days did you have?
So Tim said he can't do-
Friday and Monday.
This Friday and next Monday.
And otherwise, if you needed more time, you could do it later next week or something, so it gives everyone polishing time and RSVP time and-
I could do the 13th, the 14th, or the 16th.
I cannot, I can't do the 15th or the 16th.
That leaves the 13th.
Tuesday, the 13th.
Well, the 13th, what are we talking about, what time?
He kinda seemed like he would try to accommodate you, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I think I'm busy around, I think, what is this, 8:30?
On the 13th.
Yeah, like 8:30 in the morning for an hour or so.
He probably wouldn't be out.
Yeah, I mean, he's gotta come out, otherwise. Anytime after 10:00, well, you, you're the one who-
Yeah, I bring my BlackBerry with me. Tuesday's probably the best, if you have to put it at 10:00, I'll, I'll look at my BlackBerry when I get home.
I'll put this in at 10:00.
And what is the process that they are?
They'll walk around the property and we'll sell them why we think we don't need it. It's not appropriate to, why we don't need it because we already have.
Fractionally close.
And this is-
Really fractionally close.
It's a 40B, um-
No, this is the one over here, South Street, 50th and South Street, right.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so, I'll check 10:00 AM, Tuesday.
You'll see an email, I'll copy everybody tonight and him.
Why don't you wait till tomorrow morning?
Oh, yeah?
Because that way I can check, just to be sure I don't have anything at 10:00, okay?
Okay.
Okay, we have-
This is not gonna read itself tomorrow morning anyway, so.
Highland Commons, the treasurer has a question about Highland Commons mitigation invoice. He has a concern, he would like someone, Tom, or him, himself, him, to verify with Benderson the current square footage Larry and I have come up with, including billing for the temporary trailer space.
I would say that if he wishes to contact them on a sort of pre-game basis, he's perfectly okay to do that.
You agree?
Yep.
Okay. Colonial Power Press Release Draft Review. So they sent out all this material, they have a press release, it was already in the, um-
Telegram.
The, well, I didn't see it in the Telegram, I saw it in the Clinton item.
I think I pointed out the Telegram story and I put it there with, it's just Ken's story that ran to the Telegram.
So, I mean, I don't have any problem if they wanna send it out.
I think she just wanted to make sure that you're okay with the courts.
Yeah. Although people don't seem to really understand.
I think sometimes it's just they're not at town meetings, so they're not aware.
Well, I mean, it's not that you're, you're, you are individually going with their, that people have looked it up and said, oh, they have a terrible reputation, but we're not doing it as individuals, we're doing it as a town and we're just, we have a fixed contract with them. It's not gonna be any of the problems that you see when you look them up online where they change the price or all that other stuff because-
It's a contract.
It's a contract.
Right.
So, it's a good deal.
Do we have to make a motion on this one, or no?
I don't think so, do you want a motion?
No.
Nope.
Just tell them to go ahead?
Vacation request.
I'm gonna tell them to go ahead, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So Monday, the 26th through Thursday, the 29th, for Mary. I make a motion that we approve her vacation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen payroll, FY17, FY18. Well, you know, this is something that we'll talk about on Saturday.
Okay.
Put that in, I'll put that in with the best.
Yep. And you'll send a reminder?
I will.
Thanks.
Department head meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00.
It's not posted as an open meeting, but, so beyond tomorrow's meeting, I wanted to see who wanted to go, but do you want that to be posted as a regular selectmen's meeting?
It's not, we don't make any decisions, we just attend. I mean, the last one was that whole presentation on, um-
Toshiba, or, who, it wasn't Toshiba?
Document storage.
Documentware.
Yeah, so, do you wanna go to this?
I think I will not go.
I'm gonna take this copy so I have something to talk to them about when I document it.
If that's okay?
Okay?
Let me send it to electronic.
I haven't been home for days, so, I need to stay home.
Why don't you send this copy electronically, too?
What time is this, 10:00?
You could always do like a little update or something at the next selectmen's meeting, if there's anything to update.
I can go, I have to pay my taxes anyway.
Or if you can't go, I'd be happy to go.
I can go.
I'm going and I can take notes.
I'll go, but if it's not, yeah, I don't wanna sit through another docu thing. An appreciation letter for Maureen Johnson who has resigned from the Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
To issue the, um-
The letter?
The letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there anything else?
No. I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.